Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December twelfth. Welcome to the December twelfth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Chatham Select Board. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the chair. Seeing none. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three signing of the Acts of two thousand twenty-three extending certain COVID- nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, subsection twenty, until March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, this meeting with Chatham Select Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceeding as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to the meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number one five zero eight nine four five four four one zero, conference ID two zero three three eight six four nine one pound, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel TV, which is now Xfinity Channel eight and ten seventy, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. First item of the agenda was is a roll call. Select Board Member Shell.
Present.
Select Board Member Davis.
Present.
Select Board Member Castro.
Present.
Select Board Member Matters is present, and Select Board Member Dykens will not be joining us tonight. So we have a quorum. Just kind of a quick rundown of tonight's agenda. We have approval of minutes for December fifth. Then we will move into public announcements and agenda item requests. We have two public hearings tonight. One for a new handheld conduit at Seepine Road from EverSource. We have our continuation of our Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee discussion. We will then move on to public comments on our business agenda, and our business agenda tonight consists of three items. Consider Chatham pesticide reduction home rule petition. We have Ms. Laura Kelly present for that presentation. Consider license to use agreement at the Chatham Municipal Fish Pier South Jog by Robert B. Hour. And finally, the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust Finance Financing Agreement. We have our Director of Finance, Carrie Mazarel, presenting with that this evening. We will finish off our evening with an executive session and not return to open session following that. So with that said, I will start with approval of minutes for December fifth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
Second? Okay. Any corrections or missions, Shereen?
I have one. It's glaring in my eyes, but not a big deal. It's Shannon Eldridge with an E, not an I.
Sorry, I missed that one.
I'm thinking, Sharon, I just have two on page two, right under the minutes, roll call. My name should simply be stricken. I was not present for that roll call. And secondly, on page three, right in the middle, the paragraph that begins a concern over the proposed signage. I'd like to propose that in the third line, we strike the the language that says, as the board continues to review the and substitute pending board consideration of the ongoing parking study. Pending board consideration of the ongoing parking.
I'm sorry, Dean, what is that?
On page three.
Yeah.
Right in the middle, the paragraph that begins a concern over the proposed signage at Barcliff Avenue.
Right.
So in the last line, it would read, no parking signage, but temporary pending board consideration of the ongoing parking study.
Okay.
It's really not our study. It's the working group that's working on it.
Okay.
That's it. Mike?
Yeah, I apart from my typos and nits, which I gave the secretary, on page three in that in the paragraph, just below the single-line paragraph that begins there with support, in the second line, it was asked if there were already no parking signs on Barcliff Avenue. It was answered that I want to strike the signs are intended from, and I want to insert the previous discussion of Barcliff Avenue focused on the segment east of Old Harbor Road, and this addresses the segment west to Hitching Post Road, and then strike down.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Additional comments or corrections? All those in favor, Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis.
Aye.
Select Board Member Castro.
Aye.
And Select Board Member Matters says aye. All right. Public announcements and agenda item request. I will start with the board. Does anyone from the board have a public announcement or agenda request? None? Anyone from the live audience tonight? Is there anyone online?
No.
All right. We've got two first of our two public hearings tonight, since our clerk is not here.
You want me to read it?
Sure, absolutely.
The Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing at five thirty PM on Tuesday, December twelve, two thousand twenty-three, to consider a petition from N-Star Electric Company doing business as EverSource Energy to install one handhole one hundred and twenty-two slash H two A and sixty-five foot plus or minus of a quarter-inch conduit to provide upgraded underground service to the customer at sixteen Seepine Road. Public is welcome to attend the meeting in person or participate via a link in the meeting's posted agenda. All interested parties are encouraged to participate. Sign the select board.
Thank you very much. Do we have a representative speaking on this, possibly online?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Chair. I'm Jessica Elder, representing EverSource, filling in for Marissa Jackson, who unfortunately was double booked this evening. So thank you for having me this evening. EverSource is petitioning for work on Seepine Road. As stated, we would like the permission to install one handhole, which is going from an existing pole one twenty-two over two under Seepine Road, I believe by directional drilling, which most of the time we do, and we're installing approximately sixty-five feet of conduit. This work is requested for the customer at sixteen Seepine Road to go underground. The work should only take about a day to do, and if the board feels it's necessary to hire a detail, we will. I will definitely pass it on as the safety of the folks in the town, as well as our workers, are very important. And I think that's about it.
All right, thank you. So this is a public hearing. I'll open up to the public for comments or questions. First with the live audience. No one? Anyone online have a question or comment?
No.
No? All right. Then I'll move it over to the board for questions or comments. Mike?
Just since she indicated a question about what we feel is necessary regarding a detail, is there a recommendation from somewhere as to what we ought to think about that?
Can I just ask what the option is? Because I didn't quite hear what she.
Whether whether it needs a police detail or not. It's an all-day project. What actually, on what does the standard, to be terribly honest, I don't know how frequently we're required, but I know they're at times, obviously, for safety, but.
Yes, typically, these public hearing notices are are sent to the various departments. The department has to review. I don't recall receiving anything from the police department about a detail required. We can certainly follow up after the meeting tonight.
If we approve this, we could communicate, and if the police department feels necessary, they seem amenable to it. So I think we're pretty much on the same page.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to ask if the plan that was sent subsequent, but was not in the original packet, be made part of the record. The select board members received the plan yesterday, I believe.
Okay. Would anyone entertain a motion?
Oh. If I can get to it, I'll make the motion. I'll move to approve the the application as presented with the inclusion of the material that was added to the public record, as Select Board Member Castro referred.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Further discussion? And are we also agreeing that we're going to move over the requirement of a police detail at the discretion of the police department?
Yes.
Okay. Clear. Okay. All those in favor, Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis.
Aye.
Select Board Member Castro.
Aye.
And Select Board Member Matters says aye. All right. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
You too. All right. Next is a continued public hearing. We opened up a public hearing back on November twenty-eighth. We gave the opportunity both our waterways committee and Aunt Lydia's Cove to hold meetings and weigh in on, you know, Aunt Lydia's Cove. It's the public hearing is to consider disbanding it. I'm going to take a moment and read both the letters from our waterway advisory committee and our Aunt Lydia's Cove through our harbor master, Stuart Smith. So first item I want to put into the record today is dated twelve seven twenty-three. It is from Dick Cosmer, the chairman of the Waterways Advisory Committee. Simply reads, at our meeting, at our open meeting on twelve sixteen twenty-three, and at the select board's request, the Waterways Advisory Committee, referred to as WAC, discussed the possibility of absorbing representation of the Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee, the ALC, within the Waterway Advisory Committee and other issues regarding the Aunt Lydia's Cove. While it was understood that the Aunt Lydia's Cove has not functioned efficiently for some time, consensus of the Waterways Advisory Committee was that the Aunt Lydia's Cove provides a valuable insight into the operations of the fish pier and commercial fishing in general. We further feel that expanding membership of the Waterways Advisory Committee to replace the Aunt Lydia's Cove role would not be in the town's best interest. The Waterways Advisory Committee voted unanimously five zero zero to provide the following recommendation to the select board. The Waterways Advisory Committee recommends the select board retain the Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee, reduced to five members, with a mandate to hold regular meetings as determined by the select board, but no fewer than twice a year, and that the committee's charge include oversight of commercial fishing activities townwide. And we also received a memo from Stuart Smith in regards to a meeting that was held on December eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, by the Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee. At the request of the select board, the Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee met on December seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, to discuss the board's consideration of disbanding the committee. The Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee recommended that the committee stay in place as a seven-member committee made up of commercial fishermen. The committee felt strongly that they were that they have provided a valuable service to the select board over their sixty-plus years of history. They commented expressly on both recent fish pier construction projects, which include the observation deck slash fuel tank replacement, and most recently, the replacement of the South Jog Bulkhead Project. The committee acknowledged that not only do they provide a valuable valuable resource to the town regarding the operations and projects at the fish pier, but to fishing community interests in general. The committee has historically met at the request of the select board or when necessary to discuss relevant issues. The Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee has never been a committee that meets on a regular scheduled basis unless requested. They agreed, along with the board, that they will all need to recruit two more people for the committee as soon as possible. The consensus was that after the committee was brought up to full membership strength, they would debate the value, they would debate the value of more officially through a charge from the board, representing commercial fishing interests through the community's waterways. The committee has a tentative meeting on Thursday, January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, to discuss and/or vote on the election of officers, hoping that hoping by then, they will have two more members. They will approve or not, pass minutes, and discuss future meeting topics. So both committees have had opportunity to weigh in. Again, this is a continuation of a public hearing, so I'm going to actually go to the public first for additional comments before we circle back to the the select board for our thoughts. So at this moment, anyone in the live audience who would like to weigh in on on this topic has an opportunity to do so? Nick?
Either one. Either one, all right. Nick Muto. I assumed I was the chairman of the Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee. I realized through a technicality that it was not accepted. But, you know, I personally am committed to seeing the Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee continue to or start to regain its standing within the town and weigh in on on these fish pier projects and things, commercial fishing within the town. I feel we're kind of, we just were misrepresented lately with our our last chairman and definitely haven't been as effective as we could have been. But I'm committed to turning that around and and bringing it back to what it was and actually expanding the scope of what we do and trying to be a little more transparent in what we do and how and how our meetings are held and so on. I've spoken to the chairman of the Waterways Committee. I'd like to meet with them as well and and discuss, you know, water projects. So there's definitely a renewed interest from the existing members to keep this going. So thank you.
All right, thank you, Nick. Any additional comments from the live audience? Is there anyone online who would like to make a comment?
No one wishing to speak.
All right. So back to the board. I'm going to throw some thoughts out there. You know, this is, you know, I do appreciate the fact that both the committees didn't meet within our two-week window. Sometimes it's hard, especially around the holidays, to scramble people together, but it was done. So a couple of thoughts. One, we definitely, as a town, don't want to diminish or remove the voice of a fishing industry, very valuable asset to the town. I know we kicked around the idea of if we dissolve the Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee and then down the road create another fishing committee or name it whatever you want. All in all, we, my thoughts is, I am more inclined to to maintain Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee with a couple of thoughts, and I like to work out the process with my colleagues here. One, it's currently a five-member committee. I'm sorry, it's currently a seven-member committee with five current memberships. We have two open seats. I would actually like to keep those two open seats available and try to recruit for representation of a little bit broader beyond the fish pier and take a look at our our resources, our town resources, to figure out where we might get some more voices to help the broader discussions. So seven-member committees would be my preference. I think we should work on, if we were to move forward and close this public hearing tonight and Aunt Lydia's Cove stays in place, have a follow-up discussion about, you know, a charge, being very clear about the charge. Some kind of expectation with our meeting schedule. I mean, we can, we can ask them to meet at any time, but some kind of basic expectation on a meeting schedule, I think, is reasonable. I do think we need to, you know, and we we could consider a name change for Aunt Lydia's Cove. I mean, Aunt Lydia's Cove is not the original name of the committee. It was the harbor committee. So, I mean, that's not unheard of of changing the committee, but that's that's a minor component to the broader scheme. I do think there's been some acknowledgement that maybe some of the functioning of the current committee members, you know, they've had internal issues or what have you not. Those need to get worked out. We need to get a seven-member cohesive group that is going to work for the town's interest. We do have, just looking at the notes, we do have three members that are going to be coming up this year for reappointment. I think it would be beneficial that we have just the way that we interview each of them to kind of see what their interest is moving forward. I think that would be healthy to the process to see if they're on board with the potential. If we if we were to keep the Cove Committee, are they on board with the direction we're sending it in, et cetera? There is going to be some, I guess, more difficult discussions because I think there were some strong feelings that of how the membership should be structured. Is it someone strictly in commercial fishing? Those who have, you know, frankly, no direct ties? I think there was a mixed sentiment about whether is the appropriate committee for them to be serving on. So those are, those are something that this board needs to discuss. There's been some, it's been brought up a couple of times, residents versus non-residents. You know, it's a, it's a topic that's been brought up on other committees in the past. I guess we need to revisit that conversation. So at the end of the day, I think we can, we, the select board, can work on a charge, work on some of the visions we have for a committee that is going to be structured for the best interest of the town. And I think if we had give some time to recruit and fill those two open seats, because ultimately, we're going to be making the appointments. I mean, people can recruit as best they can, but it's up to us at the end of the day. I think we can maintain a committee, and I think Aunt Lydia's Cove has the ability to to be that voice, but I think we need to give it some very, very clear guidance. So those are my initial thoughts. I welcome your insight and opinion. So, Shereen.
Thanks, Corey, and appreciated the Waterways Committee meeting and weighing in on this and and the Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee as well in what they're recommending. And we also got a letter from one of the other members, Luther Bates, that sort of expressed the same similar sentiments that the harbor master's memo in our packet stated. He was talked about the same working points. Excuse me. The Waterways Committee, right now, the Aunt Lydia's Cove are advisors to the select board on related topics to the activities on or about Aunt Lydia's Cove. That's it. That's what they're charged with doing. And Waterways had recommended in their memo that the committee's charge include oversight of commercial fishing activities townwide. I think one of the things we were looking at were infrastructure. This, this is about the infrastructure of Aunt Lydia's Cove, perhaps the infrastructure of other of Trap Dock or or Ryder's Cove or any other place where there is. I mean, we can consider that and and talk about that. I think that the idea that the membership, if we can get seven, you know, a full complement, and that the committee meets with direction, which I think we need to really lay out, not just in a generalized term, but, you know, give a good thoughtful direction, we can, we can achieve something and see how it works for us. But I really want to express that whoever becomes chair or vice chair gets on-boarded and by the staff liaison and maybe the town manager to talk about, you know, like what those duties and responsibilities truly look like and what we're, you know, what our needs are. I think that it's really important that we're doing this with all our committees. This is why we talked about, you know, overviewing and listening, reviewing some of the committees is, are they actually doing what we need them to do? Or is there more that they can do? Or, you know, or are they off in a direction that doesn't even, you know, isn't relatable to what we're needing? So in saying all that, I'll let everybody else weigh in, but those are my thoughts on on it for now.
Dean? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I, the letter that Luther Bates sent, I would request that that be entered into the record of the public hearing. Just a couple of things, more more on the structural side of things. I certainly agree with the comments that have been made by you, Mr. Chairman, and by Board Member Davis. I do think that, just as a general principle, every committee should meet at least once during the fiscal year. We had, we had a committee that, not this committee, that didn't meet at all, hasn't met since April of two thousand twenty-two. I also think that since this committee, and this is true of the Waterways Committee as well, and it's something the Waterways Committee had on its agenda some years ago, includes members who have a direct economic interest in in the recommendations and deliberations they make. That presents a potential issue under the conflict of interest law. And I think, therefore, it's going to be very important that when we set up this committee, when we put its charge together, if we want to include commercial fishermen, fishing people who work at the fish pier or wherever, that that be specified in the vote that we take to continue the committee. So is at least, at least to give some measure, hopefully, I say hopefully because I think the Ethics Commission prefers that it be in a bylaw, to the work they do for the town so they don't get into a risky situation. But as far as the continuation of the committee is concerned, I defer to the positions and recommendations of the two committees that have weighed in and of the harbor master and of yourself, Mr. Chairman, as you are the liaison to this particular committee. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Mike?
Yeah. These are more what I'll call governance-type thoughts, but first of all, I, I mean, Dean said defer. I accept the recommendation. I mean, there's been, we've raised the question, the two committees have got together, the harbor masters looked at this. We have what I think are pretty strong and and direct recommendations to continue the committee, to keep it at seven. I know the Waterways Committee said, take it back to five. I assume that was more in deference to the recruiting problem than anything else. But I would like to say that that, having gone through this, I like to say, okay, let's, you know, let's have the Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee go out and recruit the people you think will add to your program. Like my colleagues here, I was influenced strongly by Luther's note. Get two more people. Make a recommendation to us as to exactly what you think the charge ought to be. I am generally in accord with Shereen's tentative suggestion regarding other commercial activities, infrastructure, whatever. The one thing I would say, Dean, about the conflict of interest, I'd like to see people on the committee who know what they're talking about. And and yes, we need to pay attention to the conflict of interest, but to some extent, you have to kind of, you know, sort of navigate that a little bit. As as to, the one thing I do feel that, I mean, we've talked about, the Waterways Committee said at least two times a year. I can't imagine that there isn't, if this is a real functional committee, that there won't be something to talk about at least four times a year. And I think that's a, that, I mean, if, I mean, most boards, most governing activities, even in advisory capacity, find something to talk about four times a year, and I would suggest that that's a, that's a good target for for this. But other than that, I'm, I'm kind of riding along in the sidecar here, so thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just clarify something so I'm not, so people understand what I'm saying? I was not suggesting we should discriminate against putting fishing people on the committee. I'm just saying, when we set up what the structure of the committee is, let's say it's seven people, and we want commercial fishing fishing people on there, we should slot them, because that's what the Ethics Commission likes likes you to do, so that they don't, I'm trying to protect whoever goes on this board. That was, that was my goal. If we want a public member who's not a member of the fishing community, we should say that, whatever. whatever. This is not a bylaws committee, so I'm not proposing a bylaw. That's all I was saying, Mike.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So it sounds like we're pretty much in agreement that the continuation of Antleius Cove has value and that we're going to support the recommendations of our two Waterway Committees to move forward. So in a moment, I'm going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing, and then we'll decide on the position on Antleius Cove. But it's safe to say that our next step after closing this hearing, assuming that it's going to go in the way I believe it's going to go, is we're going to have to work on the charge. We're going to get, have to get recruitment out for those two additional, two open seats and do work on our end to kind of move this forward, so.
Just two things. One, I agree with that, but I think we've had the committee stand up and say, we have useful things to do, we can be functional, we have been functional. I'd like them to come to us with a recommendation as to what the charge is and so forth. It's up to us to, let them propose and us dispose is sort of what I'm suggesting.
Agree to some extent, but we, are we looking to broaden the scope? Are we looking to get other entities, Ryder's Cove, the Trap Dock, are we looking to put all this under the committees? Because then there could be other views that are going to be added to the potential charge. So their input is valuable, don't get me wrong, but it's not limited to that, to just the committee, the current members.
I'm not suggesting limited. I'm just saying, I like, I mean, and I'm the guy with zero experience here, so I'm more interested in hearing what other people have to say, but I'd like to hear what they have to say. I mean, we're charging them with, let's let them give us input on what they think it ought to be. We don't have to agree.
That's fair. That's completely fair. Shereen.
As an advisory committee to the board, I think it's important we give them some direction. We have a value statement or a mission statement that we put together and what they have, and they have a clear definition because I think some of the things that have gone along the way is, you know, that there might be an ideal of where the direction they want to go, but we need to know, like, we need to be clear with all our committees. And I think this was one of, another reason we were all talking about all this stuff in last month or so is, you know, do they have proper direction from the Board of Selectmen? And, you know, what are we looking for and what do we need? What does the town manager need to know about Antleius Cove, you know, at certain times? You know, there's leases, there's infrastructure projects, there's budget, all that kind of stuff are really important things that we'd like to hear from the people that it impacts, you know? That would be, you know, a good, a good place to start. Expanding the committee itself, I think we, as much as we, you know, I'm advocating for that, I think we need to see if this board can actually function and do its due diligence with Antleius Cove. And then, you know, as we go forward in the next couple of months, maybe we have that conversation, but I wouldn't charge them right away with that. And again, I'm going to stress that the committee gets, or the chairs get on-boarded and get a good understanding of what direction and understand the ethics challenges that that committee does have and the possible liability it could afford to each and every member if they don't, if they're, if they're not mindful of it.
All right. So this public hearing was discussed if we were going to disband the Antleius Cove Committee. I believe we kind of made our decision, so at the moment, I'll make, I'll undertake a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Select Board Member Michelle.
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis.
Aye.
Select Board Member Castro.
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. So, public hearing is closed. I'll undertake a motion on the disbandment of the Antleius Cove Committee.
Do you want that as an affirmative motion that we vote against, or do you want?
All right. So way back, this is drilled in the back of my mind, we make it into the affirmative, and if you don't approve it, you vote against it. I call it the Len Sussman rule.
I'll move that we disband the Antleius Cove Committee.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Select Board Member Shell.
No.
Select Board Member Davis.
No.
Select Board Member Castro.
No.
And the chair says no. Okay. Antleius Cove is going to be not disbanded, and we will do some follow-up discussions, both with current members and the board itself, so. All right. Good luck, gentlemen. Now, I'm going to open it up to public comment on our business agenda, which, once again, three items tonight. Consider Chatham pesticide reduction home rule petition, consider a license-to-use agreement at the fish pier, and the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust financing agreement. So is there any public comment on any of those three items tonight from anyone in the live audience? Is there anyone online who would like to make a comment?
No.
No. All right. So moving right along, first item on our agenda, consider Chatham pesticide reduction home rule petition. We have Laura Kelly from Protect Our Cape Cod Aquifer Poca. Hello, welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for having me this evening. Hi, I'm Laura Kelly. I'm the 11th generation, born and raised here in Cape Cod. And I believe there's going to be 11 more, so it gets me to stand up and do what I can to help protect our greatest natural resources here, specifically our drinking water. I wanted to just offer to the audience, there's some handouts in the back of the room if you'd like to help yourself. If you don't mind, I'm just going to read so it's most clear. I come to tonight to respectfully request the Chatham Board of Select People, Select Board, support your neighbor Orleans by bringing the same pesticide reduction home rule petition warrant article to Chatham Town Hall meeting in 2024. And for the board to champion it to your own town residents and local businesses. To let you know, last October 16th, this fall, the Orleans Select Board unanimously championed the pesticide warrant article, which passed by 68% at the Orleans Fall Town Soon after, the Barnstable County Assembly of Delegates voted unanimously to support all, that's all 15 towns, the entire county supports this. To remind everyone, there is a state preemption law in Massachusetts that took the right away from local individual towns to make their own decisions regarding pesticides. The whole purpose of this home rule petition is that we seek the right to regulate our towns since we are so water-sensitive compared to most parts throughout Massachusetts. Currently, it's kind of a free-for-all around here. As you may realize, pesticides are products of great concern in our environment. I wanted to thank the Chatham Board members for being so proactive in educating your town residents about concerning PFASs. As you know, these have been found in our waters recently. They are forever chemicals. That means these are chemicals that don't break down in our natural environment. They are connected to a wide range of negative environmental and human health impacts. Did you know the majority of modern pesticides contain forever chemicals, PFASs? This creates an even greater concern in my eyes because it's another direct route of PAFs entering into our environment. There is no safe level of PAFs. It gets me to ask, should pesticide use even be allowed to continue? My request today is for this to be the beginning of pesticide reduction in Chatham. This home rule petition is not to ban, it's illegal to ban. This does not prevent retailers from selling anything they currently sell. It does not prevent customers from using anything they currently use inside their homes or on their own personal bodies or pets. That's, or pets. The home rule petition is about reducing the high-risk, very toxic pesticides while allowing the minimal-risk pesticides. It costs the town and taxpayers nothing. It's about shifting habits and product choices for the betterment of Cape Cod on a whole. We all can volunteer to reduce our use of pesticides. There are many viable solutions that currently offered by our local landscapers, local companies, and local businesses. People have a right to not be involuntarily exposed to dangerous pesticides. Pesticides are proven to travel from wherever they are applied, in the air or in the ground. Extensive studies prove chemicals move through the ground easily to other people's property or communities' shared resources, like our waters we drink from and swim in and the air we breathe. The science is settled, when you apply, it moves. So why do certain people have the right to pollute other people's town or owned lands or neighboring properties? Let's volunteer to seek natural ways to heal the problems occurring and reverse damaging landscape trends. Thank you for the consideration of my request today to allow this on your town meeting warrant There are ways that we can also help champion this by educating town residents and businesses, by having open hearings. That's what we did in Orleans, to give them more education on how to vote the way, to learn both sides. And also to offer, if you would like, an Orleans Select Board members are happy to come and explain the details if you would like. So again, thank you. I'm Laura Kelly. Any questions? I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly, for the presentation. Questions or comments for the board? Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, Laura. Good to see you again. It's been a while since you've been before us, and this board, as you know, has been very supportive of the efforts you've made to protect the water supply in connection with the spraying programs of the utility companies. And I'm generally sympathetic to what you want to do. I think I'm going to probably offer a motion to refer this to our Board of Health for a recommendation back to us because we have plenty of time to put this on the warrant for town meeting. I don't think we've put anything on the warrant yet for the upcoming town meeting in May. And I think, I've stated publicly, I think water quality and supply is a number-one priority for the town of Chatham. And I appreciate your commending us on our efforts to deal with PFAS. I really just had one area in the document, in the Orleans bylaw, that I had questions or concerns about. The, and this is Section 6, which is the exceptions to the prohibited pesticides. So these would be allowed, and it's really 6A1. Indoor pest sprays are allowed and insect baits are allowed, but it says, parentheses, excluding rodent baits. So I assume that's like mouse baits and so forth. Is that what we're talking about? Because I, go ahead, yeah.
I was just going to say, I believe that's for outdoor. So if you have, you know, rat trap outside or something and a bird, you know, eats the mouse or the rat, then they're affected to choose. It's a situation like that.
That's something I've heard, and we know happens. Yeah, well, if that's the intent, that it be limited, that the inclusion of rodent baits be limited to outdoor rodent baits, then I would have no concern or problem. It's the ability to place mouse baits within the house. Because I suspect 40 or 50%, if not more, of the homes in Chatham have dealt with these issues. And I don't know of any other technology, I'm not an expert in this, and maybe there are different technologies that are available to pest control people. So, but in general, I think this is a very worthy proposal, and we have two medical doctors, a nurse, and a public health professional, as well as folks who have considerable expertise in public health on our Board of Health. So I'd like to hear what they have to say. And hopefully, they'll hear from not just the general public, but people in the landscaping and pest control community if they're interested in weighing in on it. But I think it merits serious consideration for placement on our annual town meeting warrant in May. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Castro. Additional comments or questions?
I'm, I think, I think Dean said it best, Laura, in support of having this referred to the Board of Health and then review back to us. That'll give the public enough chance to really see what we're, you know, see what the Board of Health comes up with, and then we can take our position on that. But I'm in support of that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I generally in agreement with that. I feel good about referring it to the Board of Health because I don't really feel I know exactly what we're talking about here. Dean focused this on the exceptions. I noticed Item 6 says usage for commercial farming and nurseries. That seems to me to be a pretty broad exception. Is that, does that allow them to do things that nobody else can do? How does that fit into the general scheme?
Yeah, so what we're trying to do is create some, a plan, let's call it. It's a petition to guide us at this stage. That can be altered in any way, but we're trying to keep it, the language, the same. What I'm doing is, presented this to Orleans, and it did pass, and I'm going to see Chatham next week as well, Fleet in January, as Dennis and Eastham. So the large picture is to take this language to the State House in hopes that they then allow the towns to have the authority to regulate as they wish. So this is a, you know, we can go back and forth on little details, but it doesn't get crafted here, and we're hoping to keep the language the same across the board at this stage because once it hits the State House, they're going to tear it apart. I say that gently. And do with what they wish to allow us to do on our own land here. So the point is to get as many towns involved as possible within a year, and then that will give the state, because there's a preemption law preempting we towns from doing this. So we're just taking this language to the State House. It lasts for two years. It goes through a bill through Representative Sarah Peak, and she has that going to be open in January with the Orleans that just did pass. Also with the, with the Assembly of Delegates voting 100% for this. So again, it's about, you know, see who wants to get involved at this stage and really showing our strength that we do want to have the options. And the language is going to curtail left or right depending on what they wish for us to be allowed down here. So to answer your question specifically, because that was really general, commercial farming and nurseries, they're talking about larger identities in like a backyard, you know? So perhaps, you know, you have a whole entire, you know, six acres of corn or something, and there's something that's needed. At that stage, there's a waiver that you can give to your town if you have something you need in a situation. you need in a situation. It can be brought to the board that the town chooses, the Board of Health, Conservation, Select Board, and through this waiver, being allowed to use said product on their cornfield. You know, so that's where we're at at this point. So the language, I'm sure, will change.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Well, Ms. Kelly, I thank you for bringing this forward. You know, you've been before the board on multiple occasions in the past, and I do appreciate you, you know, bringing forth this item for consideration. As far as Mr. Castro's suggestion, I think I'll be turning it over to him in a moment for make a motion, but I think the Board of Health weighing in on this would be appropriate, gives it a little more exposure, a little more vetting, and it could be brought forth as a recommendation to this body that we can vote on if we want to move it toward the town meeting in May. So I will refer to our select board member, Nina Castro, to make the next motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that this proposal be referred to the Board of Health for a recommendation back to the Select Board in timely fashion for the Select Board to consider it, consider placing this item on the town meeting warrant for the annual town meeting in 2024.
Second.
Okay, further discussion? All those in favor? Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Castro?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says yes. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and I'll see you again soon. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next. Consider a license-to-use agreement for the Chatham Municipal Fish Pier South Jog by Robert B. Hour and Chatham Municipal Fish Pier North Jog by Wilkinson Environmental. We have our Director of Natural Resources, Greg Berman, present. Greg, how you doing tonight?
Very well. Hope the same for the Select Board. So this item has to do with a couple of contractors on town property that have actually already started work, and then we realize that they do not have license agreements. So this is kind of after the fact, and we do apologize for that. This is, I have the harbor master here with me to answer questions about the specific projects involved. Basically, one is the offloading of demolition materials from Spins Island over in Orleans and Pleasant Bay, a restoration of that area. And another one is Wilkinson, a project just north of the fish pier. So basically, I think, you know, moving into the future, we'll probably be working with the town manager and council, and perhaps yourselves, if you would like to be involved, to come up with procedure policy for what rises to the level of license agreement. But really, just in an abundance of caution right now, we wanted to get our existing efforts covered under this license agreement. And right now, it's our recommendation that hopefully the Select Board may not wish to charge for this work, but certainly, you know, moving into the future, an estimation of what the work is involving, whether it has public benefit for the town, all those things could certainly be considered for whether the contractor would be required to pay an amount to use town property. But certainly, you know, up to the Select Board this evening for that. Just wanted to make the recommendation, and if you have questions about the individual projects, Stort is here to answer.
Great. Thank you very much. Questions or comments from the board?
Well, I just, the things you might think, I mean, you mentioned benefit to the town. Obviously, that's one factor. Are these profit-making activities for these two companies? What's the duration of the use that we're talking about for these particular licenses? Would we be surprising them if we charged them a fee? Those are the kinds of questions that I would ask. I don't have a particular predilection one way or the other.
Sure. I guess I would recommend that we don't charge them a fee, because we're midway, well, Robert B. Hour is almost done. He should be done this week, depending on weather conditions. And Wilkinson is working at, I think, 198 and 500 Shore Road. They, I spoke with them today, and they should be done by the first.
I'm sorry, by the first of the year?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
This is, Wilkinson has used the property, or the fish pier for access before on other projects, so has Robert Hour. So.
I guess the only other thing, are they, do they displace or inconvenience, or do they have to be scheduled into fishing activities that otherwise would have a clearer shot at the pier?
Yes, they do. They schedule with me for that. So we schedule vessel traffic, depending on weather. So if they, right now, it's primarily lobstermen bringing in their lofter gear, and so I told Robert Hour they have to check with me, because sometimes the fishermen go, depending on weather, sometimes they don't. Today, they didn't, so we allow them to start a little bit earlier. Typically, it was in the evening to avoid the fishing boat traffic, but they do check with me, and I tell them, yes, it's a good day to work today, or no, it's not a good day.
Okay, thank you.
And also, in response to your question, these are private companies, one of which is working for a nonprofit, but they are for-profit companies.
Okay, thank you.
One thing you might want to think about for future discussion on the licenses, the amount of act, the amount of times that this actually takes place is a lot. So I don't, be careful what you wish for, you might get it.
Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it's a good idea to document the work that's already underway, and in one case, almost done. I did have a question, and probably it's moot at this point, but in both agreements, under the permitted uses paragraph, it simply says permitting the licensee to use the premises, according to the harbor master. I was wondering, and maybe not for these particular ones, but going forward, the actual purpose of their use is really recited in the second whereas clause, and maybe that language should be brought down into Paragraph 2 as well. And as the other, again, this is kind of immaterial, but the termination provision allows you up to, to terminate up to 90 days, and of course, these contracts are gonna terminate much sooner than that, so. And the other thing I noticed, again, just for the sake of pointing it out, in the various certificates of insurance, some of them are, show an expiration date already, so I assume those insurances are being renewed. The, Wilkinson does not have a certificate of insurance.
I do have it with me. We just didn't have it at the time, but they do.
But, yeah, I think going forward, we should probably take into account the various considerations that Mike mentioned, and whether we want to charge fees. I'd be interested in the recommendation of our staff on that going forward. Yeah, and I, I mean, if I understood the comment about be careful what you wish for, I think having at least some notional fee that's in prospect, depending on circumstances that are negotiable, is probably not a bad idea. And I'm gonna assume that this is not gonna be, no matter what we do, a big revenue item for the town.
I would assume not. I mean, I assume that there'll be some sort of a criteria developed, kind of following up on what Greg said, to when this would be needed and when it wouldn't be needed.
Okay, yeah.
And then, just, you know, moving forward, contractors will be able to build whatever fees, if we have kind of standardized fees into their projects during the planning process instead of midway. And we were kind of rushing to get this on the agenda item. Future license agreements will be much more robust.
Okay. Additional thoughts, or would someone entertain a motion?
I move that we grant the licensee, the license to enter and use the real property at the fish pier to Robert B. Hour, is that the company? B. Our Company? And then to Wilkinson Environmental?
Yes.
For the period indicated in the agreement. I'd also like to make a recommendation that we, that we discuss this and get a recommendation on fee structure and protocol for this from, by the staff.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Select Board Member Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye.
Thank you.
Last item on our regular business agenda, Massachusetts Clean Water Trust financing agreement. We have our Director of Finance present.
Hi, good evening. How are you tonight?
Good.
So there are, we have two interim notes for the Clean Water Trust that need your approval. I prepared a PowerPoint just so it's kind of clear for everybody to identify and see. So town meeting on June 12, 2021, there were two projects approved at town meeting, Article Number 23 and Article Number 24. Article 23 was for $7 million, and Article Number 4 was for 4.5, with a total of $11.5 million. The Clean Water Trust is approving us for $9.9 million for both of those projects, so 5.9 for Article Number 23 and 4 million for Article Number 24. The interim notes that we are going to be receiving are for $2,818,173, sorry. And the next one is $3,598,348, with a total of $6,416,521. We have already taken out 1,600 dollars for, in obligation, general obligation loans for those two projects, and the balance owed from the Clean Water Trust is $3,483,479. So that's kind of like the overview of what these two interim loans are for. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions or comments? Dean?
Thank you. Thank you, Carrie. This is obviously pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
And I'm certainly going to approve it. I just wanted to point out, and I had mentioned this in a previous submittal that Alex had presented to us.
Yep.
And I think it wasn't captured by the law firm in their, in their drafting of the certificate. So in looking at the certificate, it's on page, it's on the fourth page of the certificate that makes various representations, and this is under Paragraph 7, Subparagraph F, Home Rule.
Mm-hmm.
And this refers to changes in the charter, and it ends at 20, with the acts of 2020 in the legislature. But actually, I think our charter has been amended twice since then.
Okay.
And you might want to check with the town clerk, but I know that in May of 2022, there was a report of the Charter Review Committee that Mike served on, and it was voted in the May 2022 town meeting. So there were amendments, there was an amendment to the charter voted then.
Okay.
And I believe subsequently as well, to 2020, there was a no-enclosure change, when we changed the name of the Select, the Board of Selectmen. I don't know whether that was by special legislation. I think it was. So we might want to just reference that.
Yes, okay.
And so that the law firm has that.
Sure, no problem.
And. Just to follow that point up, is the amendment that was recommended by our Charter Review Committee, is it effective yet?
Yes.
It is?
It was voted, I think it was voted in May 2022.
No, no, I understand, but there was a, there was a further delay. I don't remember what the reason was, but it didn't become immediately effective, as I understood it when it was approved at town meeting. There was some subsequent process that had to be followed.
There's a year delay, so it has to be submitted to the next annual town meeting, so that's why it was a year later than the first town, I'm sorry, annual town election. And we did set the ballot.
So we did it last year?
So we did it last year. So everything was done correctly.
May of '23. That's, yeah, May of '23. So that would be the correct date for that change, May of '23, when the election took place. The other one, I think, was done in the legislature. Yeah, I think it was. And also on the bylaws, which is the sentence above F, bylaws of Chatham-Chatham, certified as of March 15, 2022. We've had some bylaw changes since then. We had the era. Chapter 100, for sure. Yeah, and that's been approved. So that was in May of '23, and it was approved July, but I think it's effective in May. So I would just check with the town clerk, and then we should probably get this language to the law firm for future purposes.
Yeah, definitely.
Otherwise, I think this is fine.
Okay, thank you.
I'll offer a motion.
Please.
If you want to have other discussion. I move that we approve the financing for the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust as proposed by the Director of Finance, and that we sign it accordingly, authorize the signatures accordingly. We're putting electronic signatures on this?
Documents right here.
Oh, they're right here, yeah. Oh, okay. So the motion is to approve the recommendation of the Finance Director and to sign the documents.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Select Board Member Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
Select Board Member Metter says aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You, too. Next, we got to move on to executive session. Would someone like to do the honors?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the board go into executive session under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A. It's capital A. Section 21, Paragraph 3. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, parentheses, New England Police Benevolent Association, parentheses, NEPBA, close parenthesis, tentative agreement and collective bargaining strategy session, close parenthesis. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the Select Board, and the chair so declares, with no return to open session. Two subparagaphs, A, New England Police Benefit, I'm sorry, New England Police Benevolent Association, parentheses, NEPBA, close parenthesis, tentative agreement for successor agreement, July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2027, and B, discussion of collective bargaining strategy.
Thank you very much. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Select Board Member Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. Thank you. We were gonna record the executive session with no return to public. All right, good night, everyone.